I gotta go around the station.
All right?
Jerry, why don't you lead us to this?
Okay.
I gladly into the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, Luke Powell will not be here this evening. He's stuck in traffic down in Jersey. Went down to visit his mother. And, uh, so, all worried about where he's at. That's a week. Yeah. Yeah, that's a week. All right. Um, I'd also like to have a moment of silence. Uh, we have Goshen who died. Came down to Hamiltonian Park. Uh, Frankie DeGeorge is Frank and Joan's son. He died of Lou Gehrig's disease yesterday. And, uh, nice, he lives in Middletown. But I know that Joan and Big Frank have been working with their son every day, trying to make him as comfortable as they could. He is, he's a nice, nice man. And, uh, the whole family's nice. But anyway, they're, they're one of us in Hamiltonian Park. So I, I'd like to have a moment of silence for them quickly. Thank you. Uh, by the way, the wake is at Donovan's tomorrow, I think, from...
Three to eight, I think.
Pardon?
I think it's three to eight.
Three to eight. I knew it was three to something. I wasn't quite sure. But thank you very much. Anyway, that, that's a very debilitating disease just dreadful. I wish that on anybody. But they've managed it very, very well. And of course, his mom was a nurse. And so she was able to do so much for him. Grateful for that. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay. The, uh, first item we call privilege of the floor. Uh, on any, anybody can talk about any item on the agenda that's going to be coming up. Um, for clarification or whatever. Okay. The first one, would someone like to make a motion? We open the public hearing to, uh, conduct a public hearing for citizens of Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills in regard to a proposed sewer rate change?
Go ahead. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, it's a request of the videographer. Uh, we've been asked that if someone's got a comment, we're gonna try to get a mic to you. Okay? Uh, the, uh, so it would be recorded more efficiently. Okay? Uh, I'd like to go through a little history of why we didn't do the sewer rates back when we had the sewer and water rates, uh, a week or two ago. Bill Standish, who was sitting in the front there in that dark shirt, um, he's our budget officer. He's very good at what he does. He's an accountant. And, uh, he wrote a letter to the village, um, and asked for what are the rates going to be for sewer for Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills for the next four quarters? And, uh, so when we finally did get the, the information, uh, he nor I nor Mr. Cantorino, who was our financial officer, or our attorney, uh, who was in my office, I said, "Well, do you understand this?" And none of us understood it. Because it came out to be extremely high rate. We just didn't understand it. So I met with the mayor and we said, you know, "We don't understand this. Could you please work on it again?" And he did. And they worked with their accountants. And, uh, and the reason, one of the reasons why I understand it was wrong to begin with was they, their financial officer over in the, uh, person in the, in the village retired two weeks earlier. So, anyway, so we got, we got new information. And, uh, the new information, uh, when we did all the mathematics on it, was basically a 22% increase. That's what the village wanted. And so the board discussed it. And because that, that increase is to move this dirt pile, which will be the second time it'll be moved. And we don't think that's legitimate. Of course, we're in arbitration on this whole issue. And so we, we think that it would be inappropriate for us to collect those funds at this time. But we did put together an increase. It's, uh, for, uh, or it's gonna be 8.75%. And for, uh, Hamiltonian Park, that's about $6.50 a quarter. And for Arcadia Hills, that's going to be, uh, $7.66 on average per quarter. Now, the purpose of this is to be covering, covering our legal fees, where we're in legal discussions and dispute with the village, and to begin accruing dollars to work on this, what they call INI, where inflow and infiltration. That's where groundwater is getting into the pipes due to their age. And when that water goes to the village, it's processed as sewage. They, they charge us as though that is in fact sewage, when it's really water. So it's incumbent upon us to start working on that. And Hamiltonian Park, uh, got the bigger problem of the two. Um, it, in fact, the pipes are over 50 years old. They get cracked in. We know it. And, uh, a lot of seals in the manholes are leaking. And, uh, we will need, we've been working on them, but we need to continue to work on them. In fact, I wish I had my numbers with me, but in the last two years in Arcadia Hills, I think we've reduced your, your INI by 22%. 22%. Yep. And I think in Hamiltonian Park by 12.8% or wherever it is. And, uh, the big thing we did in Arcadia Hills, we found a, a water line from a little stream that was running into the garp, this sewer pit. We were able to cut that off. And, uh, so anyway, we've been working on it, but we're, we're not there. Now, the other thing when we're talking about these rates, on the 18th, we're going to have this, uh, public hearing, uh, for the people in, uh, Hamiltonian Park only, where we're going to be talking about expanding your water and sewer districts to include the, uh, New York Farms or the, AKA Heritage State. And, and this, we've negotiated with the builders out there. They want to build 75 homes. And we've been, this board has been in negotiation for several months. And we think we got a good deal for the people in Hamiltonian Park. Can't tell you about it tonight, but I think when you come and you hear what, what we have to say, you're gonna say, "Yeah, that's a pretty good thing." Uh, and so it's gonna involve cash, and it's gonna involve some, some things that you need. It's also gonna involve 75 more homes to support your system. So with that, we'll be working on INI in Hamiltonian Park to even do some things that we've not been doing. So there's some bright news on the rise. The, the other thing that we have that we didn't have last year is we have Broderick Knoll. Broderick Knoll lives on Knoll Road. His daddy was a farmer. I think his mom was on the school board. Broderick Knoll is a Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute mechanical engineer. And he's working now for us with the DPW Superintendent of Highway. He's also in charge of water and sewer. And he's already done a wonderful thing on a pump failure that I mentioned in the last meeting, where, uh, we had a pump failure, shaft fail. And somewhere between, I'd say, $75,000 and $10,000 every time we give a break. And they were happy almost once a year. And he analyzed it, says, "I can fix that." And designed and put on a new, uh, impeller. Impeller. And, and so that, and it reduces vibration in this one, should run for years and years and years. So by having the right kind of skill base, working with us, I think we're gonna see some significant improvements in the water sewer districts across the place. Um, I'd also, at our last meeting, by the way, when we were talking water and sewer, we were having some major water leaks out in Scottstown. They're not here tonight, but, uh, they went out there and they fixed the water leaks. And, uh, there were two of them. One was on the private property of a house. And then the other one was on private property that belonged to the water district. They were shortcutting the line. So he's, he's good. He's good at what he does, along with Mark and the others. I see we're gonna see this continuous improvement that we've been looking for and need. Now, we haven't had it in the past. But now we have in-house technology or technical, you know, for buildings and so. So anyway, with, uh, with that, uh, it's an 8.75% rate for the next, uh, 12 months for, uh, both Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills. That is a town increase, uh, to cover the legal and INI. We are not increasing it to collect for the relocation of the dirt pile. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for questions from the public and we'll go from there. But we'll need a mic if we can get that, that's you, uh...
Joe, go for it. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, need to turn it on. God. Mike's not in charge of sewer.
Me too.
Right, yeah.
What's your argument for not having this, to move the landfill?
Our argument, our position is...
Just so the public are aware, well, we've been quasi litigation for almost two and a half years. And now we're in what they call an arbitration proceeding, in which proceeding, that issue has to be resolved as to whether or not those costs that the village incurred twice to remove an old, uh, abandoned landfill, and then stockpiled on their property and now moved again out of state, are proper expenditure to be passed along to the town residents. Again, simply put, what we, the town residents, since, my goodness, uh, since it was created probably some 70 years ago, had no use of that landfill, weren't allowed to dump in that landfill, and had deposited nothing in that landfill. And as such, yeah, with regards to construction of this new sewer facility, which the village completed, certainly with any construction, there's some excavation. But the excavation would be normal soil or rock or however you find it. Uh, it's not to be used as a subterfuge for cleaning up an old abandoned landfill, which now, the cost of which have increased enormously because they moved it twice, and have now floated another $10 million bond issue, uh, to cover the cost of relocating it again. So that, in the way of background, is what, uh, one of the items in dispute in the arbitration. And as such, I'm sure you appreciate, because it's ongoing, it's really not proper for the board to comment on that in any way other than as I just did. Because as I just did, it's factual.
You can give my position.
Uh, you can certainly give your position, but I don't want to discuss the merits of the issue.
No, you can tell my position is, we don't feel that it's a legitimate expense to us. Period. We don't feel that, uh, it's a legitimate expense. That's one of the issues of the arbitration. Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Is that okay then?
Yeah, so far.
Okay.
At the other meeting, uh, the mayor stated that Arcadia Hills and, uh, Hamiltonian Park is 12% their water bill, 12% in something or other, where the, the town itself or the village is only 10. Why are there 2% difference?
Well, I don't know quite what's the, what you're, sorry, the, we are, we represent... We represent between the two, two districts about 15% of the, of their plant's operation. Now, in addition to, uh, paying what we normally pay in our rates, we pay a surcharge to the village, 10%, for the, for the access to their sewer plant. And I don't know if that's what he was talking about or not.
He said it was, he said it was 12% for Arcadia Hills and, um, Hamiltonian Park and 10% for the village, whatever that was.
I have no idea what he was talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which was confusing.
It was, I mean, because the only two percentage we're talking about is these... Uh, you know, in essence, Hamiltonian Park's about seven and a half, and then Arcadia Hills, maybe seven and a half, give or take. So that's the 15% that we send of their total use of operation, their plant. And their plant, I think, is operating at about 50% capacity. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
On the water bill we just got, our inflow in 2010 is $146.
Right.
On your sheet here, you're not showing no 2010. You're showing 2011 on your proposal.
This proposal that we have here is the, the rate increase for the, the actual fluid that goes, that they're processing. The, the other one's gonna stay the same. In other words, that's a fixed cost. In other words, the, the INI is shared equally by every household, you know, in the two subdivisions.
In other words, in other words, you're gonna charge us $146 a quarter?
Yes.
And this new, raised though?
This eight and a half, eight and three-quarter percent is the increase on the cost of the sewage that we send.
You're showing $174 on your sheet.
That's current, that would be the current year inflation.
That's 2011.
That's correct.
Where's 2010? Done?
Done, done for 2010.
It's all done.
You're done for 2010.
No more water bills.
You'll, you'll, going forward, you will always have, until the inflows are corrected, you will always have a current year portion. Once 011 is over, we're done paying that one. We'll see what the inflows are for 012. And as the inflows get fixed, we're gonna be less charged.
How come 2008 and 2009 still are?
We, uh, because that, we spread over two years so that we didn't hit you all at once for those two years to catch up.
What happened was...
Would've been burned, so.
When we went back, and when the bill came in for 2008, I'm gonna use, uh, Hamiltonian Park as the example. I'm not sure of the bottom number, but when we got the bill from Hamiltonian Park in 2008, it was, was it $154,000? Yeah. Anyway, it was much, much higher than what we, well, I'm gonna, well, may I, I ought to use Arcadia Hills. We're told in advance, like tonight, we're telling you in advance what you're gonna pay. Arcadia Hills, 'cause I remember this one explicitly, the, we were told, a year in advance, you need to collect, Town of Goshen, $154,000 for Arcadia Hills. So at the end of the year, when the bill comes in, you got the money to give them. When the bill came in, instead of being $154,000, it was $217,000. And we said, "Well, excuse me, we didn't collect 217, you know, what is it?" So that's where we're in arbitration. And, uh, Hamiltonian Park with the same set of figures, I don't remember the numbers. So what our attorney shared with us, and it did it again in 2009, we didn't pay that because we didn't collect it from you. And we don't think we should pay it. And that's why we're in arbitration. So, but our attorney said, "Well, you need to collect that so that in case you lose, you got the money to pay it with." So we've been collecting that a little bit at a time.
But our inflow is more than our sewer.
Dollar wise, I, I did look at your bill, it could very well be.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, how do we know? That main line out of Hamiltonian Park goes down to their new sl-...
New plant.
New plant.
Right.
How do we know that there's not a thousand homes hitched into it after it leased Hamiltonian Park?
Okay, we have the meter. We take care of the meter. We, we, it's in Hamiltonian Park. We, we read that, that meter every day.
You meter it?
Yes.
But they don't take your reading?
Oh, yes, they do. Oh, yeah. That's what they do.
They take their reading.
No, they use our...
That's what the paper says.
No, they're wrong. But the fact is, we, we collect the readings every day. At the end of the year, we give that meter reading, all those accumulation of meter readings to the village. And we make sure that's in the, the equation. We, we look at that bill in great detail. And they're, they're using the right number. I can't speak to what the paper says.
Why are we getting so much inflow in Hamiltonian Park? Will you tell me that?
Yes, the age of your system. You got lots of cracks, lots of...
Where's, where's the water coming from to get in there?
It's coming right about, every time we...
You've, you've got every manhole with a rubber up top.
That's been fixed. Yeah. Where the water comes from is, when the groundwater comes up, when you get a lot of rain, the groundwater comes up, the sewer pipes are not pressurized. It's, they're just, and that water goes right in those cracks and holes and into the system and to the, into the, uh, system. And we can look, the amount of sewage that Hamiltonian Park sends to the village on a rainy, rainy day or three or four days is more than two and a half times what it is in a dry day. That's how much water's going in there. So it has to be fixed.
I've been saying that for years.
Well, we're, we're, we've been working on it. And now we're getting to the point where we're more than likely, we're gonna have to spend some bigger dollars. And, and we're trying to negotiate with a new guy down the street building 75 homes to get some money to help do that.
Now, look at my place, right? I got a one-inch water line.
Yes.
How, how long did I have to fight with you to get that corrected? You kept telling me it was a six-inch water main.
Yeah, well, we finally dug it up.
So one inch for three houses.
Right. That's correct. With the man, uh, built your, your home and the other two homes down there, he saved the money. And he just went from six-inch line down to a one-inch line for you and your two neighbors.
Still can't use the water.
Yeah. Okay.
My wife, she won't even brush her teeth with that water. You're gonna get another 75 homes hitched into it?
Oh, they do a little system.
Hey, I've never heard that before. Any other comments?
John Mongo, 22 Greenwood. Doug, the stupid thing when I came home, um, I'm wondering if anybody on the board is aware of this. Uh, at the entrance, the main entrance to, to Hamiltonian Park, there are some lines in the road, in the entrance, that are noted as sanitary line and whatnot. Can somebody tell me what that's all about?
Yeah, is that next to, uh...
Did you write about Peacock's house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, there was a water, I mean, so there was a sewer line breakage there.
That's true.
And they're supposed to go out, I think, tomorrow and dig up that line, replace it, fix it. And also Mr. Peacock's individual home line, he's having that replaced. In fact, I talked to Tony Losferrero tonight, and he said, "Yeah, tomorrow he'd be out there doing..." So that's what that's all about, actually. Yeah.
Hi, um, when are the inflows supposed to stop? Like, you have a date for, um, 2012 for the 2008 inflows?
Well, here's when they're gonna stop. When we, they're gonna stop totally when we replace all the lines. We went out last year for stimulus money. Let's see if we can get some. To replace the lines in Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills is $5.3 million. Now, we can't do that. We can only take a bite at a time. And one of the programs we're gonna be working on is, we've started and about 25% through, is we're going to every home to examine to see if there's not some pump and some of those things going into it. We think there are, we, we've disconnected some. We're doing that. At this meeting that we're gonna have with Hamiltonian Park and, uh, the, uh, New York Farms, uh, it's gonna be, like, a, it's gonna be a meeting where you're gonna find out what they're willing to give us, give you in cash, to be able to expand their district to include yours. So we'll be taking that cash and working on these problems. Um, one of the rate increases here, 8.75, is to begin to accumulate some money to begin to work on these things. Um, it's a big problem, but this subdivision's 50 years old. Uh, and we'll compare that to this new one. This new one will be made with new materials, et cetera. And the new materials today are different than 50 years ago. Um, and so the orange bird pipe or whatever that was, that we just know is full of holes. It is. And it, the only real solution is to dig it up and put a new one in. But our engineer said that one of the, we, he's hoping to get a significant reduction in it by putting new seals in at each one of the manholes. And I think in Hamiltonian Park, for example, there are 110 manholes. And if we can seal each of those on both sides, we'll make another significant improvement. So we're working on it, but we're working on it within the frame, frame of what you can afford to pay to restore your, your system. We cannot use general taxpayer funds. Hamiltonian Park Water Sewer District is owned by the citizens who live there. Same for Arcadia Hill. And, uh, um, and so that's the box in which we're working. But we've been reducing it. We think we're gonna continue to reduce it. Um, and we'll, hopefully, it's gonna be a bigger reduction than we're, than we think.
One more question.
Sure.
I didn't live in my house in 2008, and now I'm paying these inflows.
Right. It's a good question. But it's, that was a liability that went with the house when you bought it. Sorry. Okay. Any other question? Yeah?
Is, could 10% surcharge, I guess, that the village puts on us, can they justify that?
That was the contract that was signed 50 years ago. And the reason why it was done was, is the village, you bought and built their plant. And then by you coming in, the people in the village said, "Hey, you know what? We bought and paid for it with our, our money. How come they're getting a free ride?" So the 10% was put in. One of my concerns now has been, and I can't explain, uh, because we're in arbitration, is, "Hey, now you're buying it, why are you still being paid, paid 10%? Because now it's your plant as well as theirs." That's being looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In regards to these new homes that are going to be built, the 75 homes, do we have the water supply for all these additional homes?
On the 18th, no, the, the answer is yes. But on the 18th, the engineer's going to go through it, and he will show you where you're gonna end up in more water than you currently have.
Is that for...
I mean, he, he's got the numbers with all the wells and all the things they've done, pumping tests, et cetera. So I, I, I think you're, I think you're gonna be surprised with what we have, one incredible engineer, Mr. Lindsay, and he's very thorough. He's got a lot of experience. And, uh, you know, just, and he's represented you all very well in these negotiations. 'Cause this board, we're not experienced like he is. And he's really rung the bell to get your, you're saying you spell Hamiltonian Park? And I think you'll be pleased with what you see.
Does that include behind Arcadia Hills, we, we, you're gonna put in, what, 75 or more than 100 homes?
Arcadia Hills is a different issue. It's a different subdivision. And there's gonna be a lot of homes, but the builder is not, that, he's got it on hold. He's got two or three other subdivisions that he's building. So it may be a year or two off before those homes are built up there. But when those homes are built, we're gonna try to use what we're doing with Hamiltonian Park as a methodology to negotiate the contract to help the people in Arcadia Hills.
Remember, Arcadia Hills was in, uh, had a drought for, for 10 years. We couldn't order anything.
Right.
And with the new homes, I don't wanna go back to page one.
No. No, what they're going to do, and they better demonstrate that they've got water or they can't build the homes. They better drill their own wells. They've got to pump test them for our water protocol to demonstrate they've got the water to build whatever number of homes they want to build. And, uh, and so, when that, that will go through the planning board before they're given the okay to build them. And that's the process that follows.
You're going to have to shut up in case we run out of water ourselves to stop those, let them burn their own water?
You come to the eighteenth meeting, you'll hear all the details about it. Yeah. And I think you'll be pleased with what's going to be presented. I really do. Jerry?
Could I ask you a question? Why won't your wife brush her teeth with the water?
Okay.
Why won't your wife brush her teeth with your water? What, what do you feel is wrong?
Half, half of them here, they don't use the water, drink it.
Why not?
You use, you drink the water?
Yep. Absolutely. Why aren't you afraid to drink the water? We're not. We use, huh?
Well, I think the water's fine.
Yeah, we drink, we're fine with it. Oh, okay, well, he may.
Well, I think, Jerry, his, he's, he's fine. He had a problem, individual, his house, and we put a blow-off line in there to flush it out.
It's, it's hooked up to the main line. And it's dead end. And I used to have to, have to, to.
Well, we think we've resolved it as best we can, unless we go on and.
We don't use it. We buy water.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion when we close the public hearing?
Just come vote. Second.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'm going to slip down on the agenda to go through.
One, 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 listen to this, sir.
Uh, uh, when I slip down on the agenda to something else, since we appealed from Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills here. The, the fifth item on the agenda is discuss Village of Goshen's latest request for re-argumenting a prior motion to arbitrate, uh, motion to arbitrator John Cameron as illegal maneuver to prevent arbitration of the village, uh, town sewer dispute. And what I'd like to do is have our attorney, uh, well, John Ca-, oh, I, I think Dennis can go first, but, but John Cameron is the arbitrator for the, uh, uh, our dispute. So, anyway, and this is newest to the, to the town board, this, this, so, this is new and to us, and to you as well. Okay, so Dennis, can you finish?
Just to summarize, uh, it started some, over a year ago, where, as I think the residents in, uh, both districts are aware, the village billed us, as the supervisor just indicated, uh, some substantial amounts over what they had estimated for the two thousand eight, two thousand nine years. Uh, the town paid what we thought was fair and withheld monies from each of those bills for charges and, uh, billings, if you will, which we didn't think were appropriate. Eventually, uh, the village initiated a legal action in Supreme Court to collect those shored monies. And after about six months, as per the contract terms, we finally got a court ruling that it, it, the matter was not to be litigated, but it was to be arbitrated. And I realize it's a term of art, but simply put, litigation, uh, for those who are not attorneys is what you see on TV and what you read about in the newspapers. Arbitration is a much more informal proceeding without as much evidentiary requirements and is not as strict. So, you get a chance to tell your story a lot more normally or rationally than you would in a legal litigation court setting. So, it was advantageous for the town to proceed in that manner, and the village fought us on that issue. And again, it was ruled that that was the appropriate proceeding. So, we, we commenced the arbitration, and I, my dates may be a little off, approximately about a month ago. And we only got as far as one witness, uh, Mr. Bloomfield, supervisor for the town. When, uh, discussions ensued and the village, for the first time, raised the issue that the doctrine of separation of powers prohibits any judiciable review of any decision legislative that the village made, in this instance, in connection with, with the construction of the sewer plant. And, uh, again, rather complex issue, but simply put, what the village position is, is that they do not wish to arbitrate, they do not wish to litigate, they believe that what they have done is what they call a legislative governmental decision, which pursuant to the doctrine of powers, no one can review. And, uh, the arbitrator who was appointed by the Supreme Court State of New York to hear this arbitration initially was this fellow, John Cameron, who's a Goshen resident. He's a, he's a retired attorney, used to court for a number of judges. Uh, he had us, what they call briefed the issue of separation of powers, and about ten days ago, ruled that the arbitration was to go forward and that technically speaking, the town was not to directly contest the decision governmental to build the sewer plant, but we could, what they call collateral attack issues surrounding it. And that's what the town is interested in, simply put, uh, for laymen and, and for attorneys that matter also. The town has never contested, nor do we contest, the village's right to build a new plant into which both districts, uh, deposit or ship or transfer their affluent. What we contest is some of the methodology they used to build you folks. What they've included in the bills, uh, love is stockpile, which we mentioned earlier. So, again, going back about ten days ago, the arbitrator, after this legal argument, uh, having been briefed, rendered a decision indicating that the arbitration was to go forward. Today, the village again submitted more legal requests, in this instance, about a ten-page legal document, it corresponds, brief, whatever you want to call it, requesting of Cameron that they be allowed to re-argue the issue. And by re-argue, I mean, they want to re-argue the issue of whether or not the doctrine of separation of powers or some other doctrine prevents the arbitrator from even considering the idea or even reviewing or going forward with the arbitration. Cameron, uh, indicated in a memo today that procedurally speaking, just like you hear in, in normal life and other litigation or, or legal matters, there always is a right to appeal, eventually to the highest court, be it in the state of New York or the United States Supreme Court. And Cameron treating that request as a request for re-argument is going to allow that issue to be re-briefed again. It's like a second bite of the apple. And, uh, we just were notified of that today. And so, that's the status of the arbitration at ti- at present, meaning we started a month ago, we're going to probably have another hiatus, I'm thinking, for approximately thirty days by the time we brief it, uh, they get a chance to reply to it, and then arbitrator judge, if you will, uh, has an opportunity to make a decision. That decision, again, would go to the issue of whether the arbitration can go forward. And that would be the arbitrator's decision, yea or nay, just as he found some ten days ago, that it was a yea and we're going forward. Uh, what I can't tell you tonight, and I can't tell the board either, whether that would conclude it, because the village, if they so chose, would have other legal paths to contest any decision, so long as there is some issue or decision to contest, and there was some vehicle or someplace to go with it. And that's the present status.
I talked to the mayor this afternoon, called, called me back. And I explained to him that the town, our position, each one of us, all along, has been, uh, win, lose, or draw, we want to get on with this arbitration. We're not afraid to lose, we're not afraid to draw, and we're not afraid to win. We just want to have our voice heard on your behalf. And we want to do it at a reasonable cost and as quickly as we can. Nothing more, nothing less. These legal maneuvers are put there so you will not have your voice heard. It'll be putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. And I shared with the mayor and said, listen, you know, you, I want you to articulate what I just said, and your board to articulate it, that the village wants to move along and, and resolve this as quickly and inexpensively as you can. And that you too will be willing to live with a win, a lose, or a draw. Nothing less, nothing more. This is the town and the village of Goshen. This is not, w- w- we're just, we're spin, this is the community of Goshen. This is not a good thing for all of us. It's costing every, I put in the, their tax rate tonight, increases for litigation. I mean, I get much complicated bills and I want to choke. He's a nice guy. And you can imagine what the village is looking when they get their, their bills, legal bills. You know, no one wins when you go on and on and on and on, the attorneys. I'm, I don't mean to be vulgar.
Okay.
But my, well, but my dad always said, when you get to pee in contest, all you do is get wet. You don't win. And so, this, I really truly believe could have been resolved years ago over a cup of coffee, or two or three cups of coffee. Now, I like the people in the village. Hopefully, they like us and our board as well. It is not about like or dislike. It is about working together to resolve an issue. And it's time, okay? It's time. And, and so, if they could articulate that, what I just, our position, I think we'd be so much better off. And I don't know why they haven't up to now. Because I, it, this, it, when you get asked and all that going on, it just takes on a life of its own, just does. So, Jerry, when you put that in the paper, I'm thinking about the, the contest and, but I'll keep that out. But anyway, that's kind of where I feel honest. I mean, because I, I really, we, we, the citizens deserve, if any time in history, any time in history, where you don't want to waste money, it's now. All that money that we're wasting on attorneys, and I consider it wasted, we could be putting into the sewer system to fix it or whatever else, you know? We've got plenty to work on without taking this on and on and on.
I think you may want to point out also that it's just not legal fees. Unfortunately, the, the cost of these proceedings, if you've ever been in litigation or arbitration, can be absolutely phenomenally high, because you not only have attorney's time, which many times is not inexpensive, but in this instance, you have engineers involved, we have accountants involved, we have forensic accountants, accounting being done, we have reconstructive, uh, engineering being done vis a vis the plant operation to demonstrate what we're concerned with on the buildings. And naturally, there are, there's always two sides to every story. The village, I assume, will attempt to and will want to rebut whatever our position is, which means we not only have, they not only have to listen to our experts, we have to listen to theirs, and we have to keep these people present. Because you've, if you've ever done anything in the engineering or accounting field, no matter how much experience you have, unless you are in fact an engineer or an accountant, you've got to have one sitting next to, with, with you or participating with you in order to understand the rationale, comments, statements, and testimony. So, uh, what we're concerned about, as the supervisor indicated, was this enormous potential cost, and we can't even get to the battle, uh, for fighting these little skirmishes, uh, procedurally and otherwise.
Board, uh, you owe me a question.
True words have never been spoken.
I want to, I live in the village. I live in the village, and my question is, do we have an endless source of money to pay all these legal fees? I keep saying the same thing. I'm suing myself. It is so foolish. I mean, there's an arbitrator. It would be a simple thing if both sides, if we have said all along, just make a decision, win, lose, or draw. But every time we think that or talk about that, the village files another lawsuit. Well, I mean, I'm paying for that. I can't figure out when it's going to stop, and it's just splitting the community. It really is dividing the whole community and causing a strain on everyone. They, I'm not sure what they're really thinking. I'm not sure if the attorneys at this particular point have taken control and are making the decision, because that's what it appears to me.
I just want to point one thing you said. It's one lawsuit, it's the same lawsuit, it's just different legal maneuvers or tactics.
Well, he remembers, instead of letting the arbitrator say, yes, no, this is right and hearing all the information, and that's all we want, it's all anybody wants, that's why we want a, a separate arbitrator. That's why the contract says arbitrator. So, I, I mean, I want this to end, we all want this thing to end. I mean, because whatever, the village pays legal fees, we have to defend whatever they do. It's absolutely ridiculous. Thank you, Phil. No, no, you said it, and you said it well, and, uh, anybody else like to?
To me, it seems that the village, I mean, they're the ones that are going to have to give in. When that bill becomes due for moving that jump, and if you're not going to help them pay, those village residents are going to get claimed for it.
They're going to kill right now. They're going to get killed.
Yeah, well, see, the interesting about that is, I think the supervisor can comment, is that the, the increase that you had previously referred to in why this meeting was adjourned was, is the, was the village's attempt to allocate a portion of that ten million dollar bill to relocate the landfill, stockpile for the second time, to the town residents. The village residents have not incurred that yet, because they haven't gone out to bonding, and it hasn't appeared on their bills. Uh, but, you know, basically, what you, what you've got is a situation where whatever the operating costs are of that plant, call it X, someone has to pay that. And the village charges its residents, they charge you folks in the two districts, and it's, uh, going to be paid accordingly depending upon the numbers. It's a question of who has to pay it. And that's what, that's what, again, is part of the arbitration.
But I think to your comment, if you, if you look at the contracts as they were written through the years, and all the, all the background, all of this, you would, I think, come to conclusion that we've come, and that is, it's inappropriate. Now, we went out to the state of New York. I wrote, the board authorized me to write a letter to the state of New York Comptroller's Office and asked for an audit, financial audit for the village and the town and our sewer finances. And the, the contractor, uh, uh, Comptroller Office came back and said, yeah, uh, we think you've been overcharged. And we think that the, the relocation of that landfill, uh, wasn't planned out very well. The initial plan was supposed to be twenty-two and a half million dollars. It's going to be over forty million dollars. I mean, stop to think about that. And people in the town never had access to that landfill. That was for village exclusive use only for all those decades it was in being. So, I don't want to go into all that kind of detail, right? But, uh, that's why we've been studying this and studying it and talking about it. We think we have a strong case. The village thinks they have a strong case. Well, great, let a third party here who's got the right case and the wrong case. And if we're wrong, hey, we've done our best. And if we're right, we've still done our best. And it should be the same way for them. It shouldn't be. The one thing, uh, what I see going on here is that the legal fee will become higher than the actual amount that we're in arbitration for. And then, we'll still have to pay the arbitration amount, or someone still has to take that. I mean, it just makes no sense whatsoever. Something's, yeah.
No, I, I'm hearing what I heard tonight, that you just asked, what you want to get, the village effort to put another legal hurdle into our, we, this board wanted to be a final solution, we don't want to pay any more money, sure money. And I'm afraid that, we read a few months ago, the village proclaimed a great victory. They only paid the contractor out there fifty thousand dollars for the lawsuit, but they paid two hundred and sixty-some odd thousand dollars in legal fees. I don't want to see that. I'm very disheartened tonight. Every time we think we're going forward, it's, to me, a very simple, simple meeting. Go in, outcase their case, we thought originally be able to maybe a one. But again, it's another attempt that your, Pete does put it out, out nicely, another attempt that your voices cannot be heard in the village of Goshen. They don't want to hear it. Pay up, shut up, end subject. And this board is committed, we're not going to go down that, that route, whether they protect you and anyone else that comes down, because it's very economic times. We don't, we don't want to hear that, and I'm sure you don't want to see any bills on legal fees or engineers, because they're not going to be allowed.
Jerry?
Yeah, Doug, Jerry Boss, Tax Pad. This sounds like a three-card monkey game here that's being played on the town. Now you see it, now you don't. Our bill, if I recall correctly, is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Something like that.
Yeah. Now, we are far exceeding that with legal fees, rightfully so. The sewer plant was built, did we have input into that?
No, we didn't.
Did we have input into how much money, Kelly would appreciate this, what the electric bill is to run that plant?
No.
Are we in fact being billed for part of that electric? Are we being billed at all for any of the salaries or part thereof of the employees? Does that maintain that?
Yes.
So, we got a car without an engine. There's something wrong here. Let me finish this. There was something wrong here. There's something beyond 187,000 dollars here. Beyond that, whether they want us to pay for their sewer plant, or their electric bills, or whatever, having been, lived in Hamiltonian Park 15, 20 years ago, my bill was 54 dollars and change every quarter. That's like chump change today. There's something, Doug, that I'm not getting, maybe Dennis? What is the end all here? I mean, it's just like a bad divorce? I want the dog? No, cut the dog in half.
Well, I think that, uh, the things were rocking along just fine until they built the new sewer plant. And the sewer plant, I think they borrowed 32 million to start with, and then they're borrowing now, I guess, another 10 million, find a dispose of the dirt, so now you have the 42 million. You put the interest on all of that, you're talking a lot of money. The money has been spent. It now has to be paid back. Oh, where are we gonna get? And that's where we're at.
Sounds like a Shylock operation.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't wanna be critical of the village, you know, they had to do what they had to do, but we had a contract, and there are certain parts of what they did out there that we can find fault with. And again, if we're wrong in our assumption, the arbitrator's gonna say that. You're not gonna get relief from that, Mr. Field. But over here, you are gonna get some relief. I didn't go into this thing thinking we're gonna get everything we wanted, but I thought we certainly get something. I just want someone to hear it. Nothing more, nothing less. I just want a third-party impartial person to hear it. And I don't wanna spend a gazillion darn dollars to do it, because when we, one thing our forefathers did right was to put arbitration in the contract versus suing litigation, because arbitration by its very nature is much less expensive and much quicker. And they didn't expect great big things, but the very fact that this plant was a big thing, and relocating the landfill was a big thing, it's now, the money has been spent, and now it escalates everything up. Yes, Mr. Field?
Doug, so back in '08 and '09, um, the town got bills, and we knew that they were wrong, or we felt that they were wrong, and the board paid them what we thought was right and fair. And so then, the village wanted to, uh, to take us to litigation, and we wanted arbitration, and so, you know, here we are after many, many months, finally, in arbitration.
Right.
And now, the village doesn't wanna arbitrate. What does the village want to do? Because we've got this bill that we're not going to pay. So, if they don't wanna now litigate, and they don't wanna arbitrate, what do they wanna do, and what is your conversation with the mayor, and what is his feeling on this?
Well, what they want us to do is not to protest anything to pay them what we owe them, is they think we owe them. We don't think we owe it, Ken. Uh, when I talked to the mayor today, he said, "Well, what they're doing is legally correct, they have a right to do this." I said, "Well, I understand that. You have a right to do, follow the legal procedures. You can spend more and more and more and more money being right on legal procedures, but it's the wrong thing to do. That's not what the intent of this contract said to begin with." So, my concern is, they're not going to hear us, and they'll continue to put these legal maneuvers and blocks in the way, because it's, they don't want to lose at any cost.
Not in the best interest of the people.
If not anybody.
All the way around.
Anywhere, all the way around.
How do we put a stop to it? How can we end this game that they're playing?
The only way you can end it is for an ultimate decision from whatever court, or judge, or arbitrator is in place, where there is no further right of either re-argument or appeal. And that's why I alluded to before, I can't speak for the village, but it applies to both sides. In theory, if you feel aggrieved or don't like a decision, there is always a basis to take and try and re-argue or get a different decision by arguing on appeal. It becomes a question of, in the state of New York, uh, it would go from the arbitrator to a Supreme Court justice, to the appellate division, to the Court of Appeals. And then, it potentially could leave the state system and go in the federal system, to the district court, the circuit court, the Court of Appeals, the Supreme Court of the United States, because again, these are constitutional issues, as I referred to before.
So we're not gonna go into, into a federal system?
I would hope not, I would hope not. Although, you know, that's very common nowadays in terms of sewer water disputes, if they're brought in federal court, I would hope not.
We've always taken the position that we'll abide by the decision of the arbitrator, period. We want it stopped. We want the arbitrator to listen to both sides, which he has done, and make a decision. And we wanna move on.
So in the contract, it stops at the arbitrator?
Yes.
That's what the contract says.
Let me see if I can help you though, because I was at home eating dinner and having my cup of coffee, trying to think, how do we put an end to this? The only way that we're gonna put an end to this is to the village to say, you know, "I think the town board in this case is correct, let's do it, and let's make the decision, we'll win, lose, and draw," and they'll articulate that. Hopefully, they'll see that. Short of that, the only way this is going to stop is for the citizens in the village to talk to their board, say, "You know what? Why are you spending my money this way? Why are you reverting our fellow citizens out there spending their money to rebuff ours? There, we go to the same churches, go to the same stores, you know, go to the same schools, we're friends, in fact, we have made children out there, or whatever it is." And so, you know, one of the things we, I love it when people come like tonight, where everybody can kinda ask a question, have your voice heard. But most of the time, if there's not an issue, Jerry will be here, and the other jury for the paper will be here. Nobody's here. So I think what's happening is, is the people in the village will read what Jerry says, you know, tonight, the paper, and they say, "You know what?" Or watch the videos, and they say, "Well, you know, it is time I step up to the plate and act like a citizen." Because that's the only way it's gonna change.
Does the village hold meetings like we're holding here?
They hold them.
And do they discuss what we discuss?
I don't, well, they have the same time, so I don't know what they do, but then there's another period.
Watch the video.
It's, uh, www.goshannewyork.info.
I don't have a computer.
Sorry. Maybe at the public library though, if you wanna, if you really wanna watch.
We will continue to, I mean, we're gonna, I'll promise this to you, we'll continue to work with the village, and now with this issue, there's a lot of issues. We'll keep the dialogue going. We'll ask them, and ask them, and ask them.
I know you've been doing a fine job on our behalf, and we appreciate that, but it's frustrating.
I loved your question. Why don't you call up the village chairman tomorrow and ask him a question? Because we can't answer it, it's just, I said.
And they're not willing, and they're not willing to answer it.
Just so you know, we, myself and Dennis and Luca Paolo, we've been negotiating over a year and a half with them, trying to solve, even before I got to arbitration, but they've taken the initiative. That collapsed, and it went to the next step, so I don't wanna beat it to death, but we've been trying for at least a year and a half, two years, to solve it like it should've been solved now.
But maybe with a new mayor and a new board member, they'll have more discussion, and I'll say, "You know what? I think that's right. We're trying, we had an economic development meeting with all of the village and the town here a week or two ago, went well. So, we've gotta get back on the same sheet of music, but if we're on one and they're on another, it's not good for anybody."
I think if it's published how much actually the village is spending, and we're spending on all this legal fees, it would, it should strike a nerve with the village residents.
Well, we could certainly, we could provide those legal fees what it costs thus far to the newspaper. I might put that in your article.
And it's distributed?
And I don't know what the village is paying. But it would, it'll, it'll jar you and stamp you.
I don't wanna go.
Right, okay.
I wanted to ask a question.
Folks, thank you very, very much for coming.
Thanks, Terry.
And, uh, we'll keep working, it'll, oh, old George.
How much is the state paying?
State paying? Nothing. Wish they would. Well, the state is paying less and less and less, dude. Totally broke, right, as we all know. Anyway, back to the matter at hand, as far as I'm concerned, basically, everything's been said, I'm the last guy out of the box, so I don't have anything earth-shattering to tell you, but simply put, we both agreed to arbitration. They contested that, they had their say, but the bottom line is, we both came to the door willing begrudgingly, I guess, on the village part, to have arbitration. So here we are, we're at the arbitration, and it starts. Then a new guy enters the scene, and this new guy is a partner of the law firm, of, David Donovan is the actual attorney for the village, but one of his partners enters the scene, and allegedly, some other person from Rockland County, which I don't know whether or not it happened or not, that's immaterial. But you really should take a look at some time of the documents that have been authored by this Mr. Michael Donnelly. It just boggles the mind, I mean, you know, the amount of money and the amount of time and experience that went into this is just unbelievable. You know, we got the second draft just tonight, so I read it really quickly, but it's just off the charts. And I still go back to the fact that, you know, you don't come to the arbitration and then all of a sudden decide, "No, no, we're not gonna arbitrate." Bottom line, this is what I think is happening, is the village is giving us some information about, you know, this and that. The bottom line is, I think this is what's happening. They are not willing to give up a dime, because then the price drops back to whatever it is, and it starts again. If, as my example, let's say it's $100,000, and then we have to wind up paying 80. Well, that's where the base will start, at 80. And it'll go up from the 80. But if it's $100,000, the full amount that we owe, that's what they want to do. They wanna do that and move on, and to tell you the truth, I don't think they had really any intention of backing off of that, even though there's a lot of smoke and mirrors going on. So, that's unfortunate, because we all agreed, as everyone sat here tonight, we all agreed, win, lose, or draw, let's move on. We have big issues with the village. This is just like a pebble compared to the other issues that we have to work together. And, as Doug said or something, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the village residents, me being a village resident, and I have that wonderful extra tax bill, water and sewer bill, but the bottom line is that, you know, to the people, basically, I think, rise up in the village and say, "Stop spending this money stupidly. You're spending, as Kenny said, you know, we had a great deal, we got $50,000 back, but we spent 260,000 to do it." Now, I'll tell you this, if that was coming out of their pockets, that would never be done. It's just this kinda fool's game, that you, you think you have a bottomless pit when you're dealing with tax money, but you don't, you know? Those days are over. You know, they should've been over a long, long time ago, but they're really over now. So, that's my opinion at this particular point. I have a lot of other opinions, but I don't think I should be talking about them until this arbitration or litigation is over. Thank you. Okay, folks, thank you.
Real quick to follow what George just said, is the conclusion then that this is really about the future of the IMA survey?
It could be the best.
That what this is really all about is the future of the relationship of the town and the village over the sewer agreement?
I think it's about the integrity of the law firm suing. I think they're more afraid to lose, so I think there's some bad advice being, I'm gonna just say it, being given to that board about what they should do. And I said it before, I think the control now is no longer a board's decision. They'll be mad at me. I think the attorneys are controlling this then. And the integrity of that law firm is probably at hand, so they're just gonna keep going on and on and on. Well, I'm gonna have to keep paying them and paying them and paying them. We have a $60 million debt in the village. I think our debt load in the town is about 3 million. I mean, think about that. We have 8,000 people, they have 6,000 people. We have to pay this back. It is just, and they just continue to pile it on. Let's get to the arbitration, have the arbitrator make a decision, move on.
As you can tell, I'm pretty frustrated, and what you are.
You know, there's, I share with the board, I had an older sister who had a doctor's degree in clinical psychology, and she said, "The definition of anxiety is when you feel you have all the responsibility, but none of the control." And she used the example, my daughter was 16, and I asked her to be home at midnight. At 2:00 in the morning, she wasn't home yet, and my sister was, isn't, and she, Doug, here's a typical example of anxiety, because I felt responsible, but she had the control. So that's where we're kinda at tonight. Folks, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay? Dennis, can we move on to the, with a motion? On the, the rating period? If we can, let's go ahead and get back to our, yeah. Would someone like to make a motion then, that we accept the proposed sewer rates for Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills as presented?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion, Karen. And the board, I'm glad for your candor on this issue.
And you did a great job of leading us through it. Yeah, you did, it was urgent. I think it's a great idea, what you did, why we raised the rate, so we can pay all some of that, and get some money for the future.
Item number two, I've removed from the agenda. BC Stog, wanted to use the Pumpkin Swamp Road or Killen Project, we didn't hear back. The next item is, Priscilla has put together an event permit application in support of our local law for events, which is still, we have that public hearing on it right here. And, uh, what we have with the Yiddish bar, the guy needs an application, but I'd like to know, if we were to say to Dennis, Dennis, I looked through it today, it looked pretty good, could you look through it from a legal perspective, and if you kinda like it, would the board kinda give you permission, or us permission, if we're gonna use this for this upcoming event?
I would, I would, most of Dennis would be, yeah, I haven't seen it yet.
No, no, I, I, okay.
But I know Priscilla's been working on it, and I, we had discussions recently.
Because I mean, I don't think we already have time tonight, because it's a gritty of it, but Priscilla's done a boot camp, and spent a lot of time on this thing.
Yes, you have.
And I think, what I looked at very furiously, it's pretty inclusive, and I think it'd be a good, good start. Okay. So, Priscilla, thank you.
And what we'll do is, I'll get together with Priscilla, and unless there's some egregious concern, which we may modify, we'll use it as a basis of process, because again, the permit can't be acted on until subsequently the law. But again, we can still get the process rolling.
Well, the guy's looking for something.
I know, it was here the other night.
Do you need a motion on it?
No, no.
Okay, very good.
Okay, the next one, we, uh, listen, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a work session, uh, 4/11/2011, and regular meetings of 3/24/2011, and 4/14/2011.
So moved.
I just had a comment about, I wanted to abstain actually from the 3/24, because I wasn't here. And then I gave one change on the 3/24 minutes, I already gave that to Priscilla.
Well, then, can we modify that then, since, uh, keep this way, okay? All favor say aye?
Aye.
I abstain on 3/24.
Okay, on our new business, Dennis, we can talk about the resolution, um, tax surcharge for the new one.
Yeah, as discussed with the board on Monday evening, there's been three tax surcharge resolv, item four is not ripe for resolution, so that should be stricken from the agenda.
That's marked?
That's marked, correct. But items one- But items one, two, and three, Newport one, Minolta Inc., and GAM Properties are all the subject of motions which you have, or resolutions which you have in the package, wherein are set forth settlements of those tax surcharge proceedings for those three entities, as negotiated by and agreed to by the assessor. And in each instance, you have a motion, and attached to it is a copy of the judgment, indicating the particular reduction, or change, or modification, and the number of years affected.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding the Newport one resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, before you go too quick on me, let me get the movement with Councilman Lyons, and the second was Councilman Cantorino.
Right.
Uh, also, just so you're aware, all of these have been processed, technically. What we're doing now is, I believe resolutions were previously adopted, possibly orally at a meeting, but we couldn't find them in the minutes, as Priscilla knows, they were served. So, these are more or less ratification actions of what was previously discussed with the board, you're all aware of. And so, for the record, doesn't it have more formality, so you're aware.
Okay. So, any discussion? Madam Court, can we roll a call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newport?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Yeah, you got the numbers, that's, yeah. I, I do, yeah, I have, there is, yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding the Minolta Advanced Tech?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All favor, Madam Court, can we roll a call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newport?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye, motion carries, thank you. And the last one is, would someone like to make a motion regarding the resolution regarding the GAM Property Corporation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Court, can we roll a call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newport?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye, motion carries, thank you very much. The next one is, um, Monday night, we talked about having to hire a part-time data collector, it should be data collector name, um, with the assessor. And, uh, so she's come up with one, you can see the David Levins, and you can see his resume. Uh, he is capable of doing the job, our assessor knows him. Uh, she would like to hire him part-time for the period of May sixteenth, which is Monday, through April thirtieth, two thousand twelve, um, which is at the time the reevaluation process will be finished, at a rate of seventeen dollars per hour. And then David would provide his personal car and fuel at his expense as part of his job assignment. Now, with this, from my understanding from the county, uh, we'll provide someone as well. I, that thing worked out between the gentleman and the head of rail property, the county. So, would someone like to make a motion regarding this approval, hire this fellow?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things, um, I, I'm a little bit concerned over the fact that we're hiring him for the whole entire time, April thirtieth, two thousand twelve, I wonder why that binds us. Let's say the guy doesn't work out, which I don't think is going to happen, but, um, you know, usually you have like a probation period, you know, who knows? And that's just one issue. The other issue is, is this guy going to get a ten ninety-nine a year, or is he going to get a W-two? Or is that a W-two, whatever? He's actually now an employee.
He's a part-time employee.
He's a part-time employee, yeah.
Not a contractor.
Right. And then the last thing I had was, um, this use of this personal car and the, and his fuel. I, I, I like it.
We made it by our turn.
But, uh, that's, that's legit?
That's, that's, right.
I have to say, Chris.
Okay, yeah. So anyway, I guess going back to the other issue, then, is, is, um, you know, I, I know he, and I, I look at his resume, I read it.
Well, you know, we can actually say, if you, if you would so desire, we can hire him, effective Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand eleven, and leave it at that. But, most of the time, the part-time employee could not work out, you should say, sorry, you know?
Yeah.
We have a problem with that, then?
No, in fact, I would leave out the termination day, it's just, it's just using section day.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion, then, that we hired this gentleman?
I guess I'll withdraw my second.
No, no, we'll have to do it over again.
Yeah, that's correct. So I'll withdraw my second. I'll, I'll withdraw my first. We're now back to that, okay. So we're just crossing out April thirtieth.
That's correct.
Aye.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion, then?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just make sure he goes, pull his background check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will be worked with Barbara and Jim. But good comment. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the next person that she'll be coming to, to us with is, Julie, we're going to go to the county to get a, see who's on the list of the clerk, part-time clerk. And she needs that person July first, when they actually go out in the field. So someone will be in the office to do the office work. So, either going to go to the county, and if they can't find anybody there, there'll be advertising for that.
You need to go down to Garrett's office.
Does it, no, this is going to go to, this is a clerk, right, civil service, part-time, to see if there's somebody over there.
Do we even have to go to civil service, it's going to be for a short period of time?
It's going to be a year, part-time.
It's part-time, but anybody can, it's part-time?
It's part-time. But she just wanted to see if there's a list over there, if somebody's already passed it?
No.
No, no, she's, I'm just saying, she's going to go there, see if there's somebody on it, who's willing to work part-time.
Oh, that's true.
Okay. Um, so we'll be back in that, probably sometime in June. Okay, the, the next item is a, a new item, since Susan Cleaver wrote me a letter, and requested that we purchase free texture data loggers at a cost of a hundred and five dollars each, one communicational, communication optical base for a hundred and fifteen dollars, and one software package for ninety-nine dollars. Now, for a total of five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. And she believes that our building zoning office, with her working volunteering on this, we need to be monitoring the auto kill and black metal watershed, uh, the water temperature, since the, uh, this is now, um, we had earlier on, said this was, I can't remember, special district or something, but I can't remember the title of what that was. But anyway.
Threatened.
Threatened, whatever it was.
They were labeled threatened.
They were labeled threatened. So anyway, they're very special, and they're in negotiation. And, and what it is, she, what she wants to do is monitor and chart the, the temperature to ensure that the water going in from stormwater drainage and other things doesn't heat it up above what is permitted by the D E C wall. So, it's an investment of five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. She will be doing the work voluntarily on our behalf, so that's the request. So with that, would someone like to make a motion that we authorize the purchase of that equipment not to exceed five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, as monitoring equipment for the building and zoning office, uh, to monitor the temperature, water temperature of the auto kill and black metal crates?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess, who's going to draw and actually monitor?
It'll, it'll, he may, or it'll be Susan, more likely.
Okay, now what, what do we do with those facts? Just put them in a file, so they're passed on to the D E C or the county or somebody to?
I, I don't know.
Like that information, pull it forward. What good is it?
Oh, no, it's needed information to create a baseline, identify, anytime there's going to be a change in that temperature, that information will be going to the D E C.
Oh, okay, that's what, that's what, yeah.
To give everybody else a little.
I don't have to.
Because those, those rates are in our, in our town, in our world.
I mean, I commend for our concern, which is, Jerry, you've been on it for years. It's not, Jerry, you've been on it for years, too. Monitor, take care of it.
It's not an individual request, it's a request from the environmental review board.
Right, right.
So, you know, it's a board request, not a, yeah.
Oh, great idea.
Does it say that in here?
Yeah.
The environmental review board. Okay, there you go.
Please make sure, right. Just not, yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out.
It's a board request.
Excellent. Okay, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Just as information, we have another request for an outside music event, that they want to hold it on August twentieth, two thousand eleven, on the Andrew Field property on the Route seventeen A. And that's that yellow farm, just before you get in the Florida, on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
We've had onion festivals, they were there in Texas. Anyway, you'll see the request online.
Let's go about the woods, we have boys, we have boys concert, right, here and go.
Okay, and anyway, would someone like to make a motion to authorize supervisor to pay it, um, manual accounts payable runs of three-twenty-nine, two thousand eleven, amounted to eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, twelve cents, and manual accounts payable runs, uh, four-twenty-seven, two thousand eleven, and five, uh, May third, two thousand eleven, amounted to a hundred and one thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and six cents.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So now, we're open for, for those on the floor. Jerry?
Doug, I have one question. Uh, what is it? Heritage, Heritage Estates is now New York.
New York.
How are they going to hook up the line, the sewer line, which I have to assume is going to go down Old Chester? Does Mike?
I would say come on the eighteenth, you can hear about it. The engineer can share all the stuff. The listings are this, that, and how it all works. Very good question. I think the people are going to be very pleased with what we've negotiated for. Hope so.
So we won't have to make a pinata out of you.
Well, no, you know, the thing is, if they don't want it, it's fine. It, it'll be just, they'll, they'll pretty, they'll just out there, they'll put.
You know, it's one of the things, as you know, I've been going to these meetings, and my hair was in this color, Kenny can attest to that. This is probably one of the best boards that I have ever encountered in all my years, although Mary was a little bit, a little more Joel field than you guys.
Yeah.
But you do a great job. It's, you're very open, people have input, you don't try to muffle people, like the town wall kill, you don't have the break button, or whatever the hell it was.
My legs are watching up your head, you know?
Shut up, boss.
Well, you know, I, I, I speak on behalf of the board, I think we like it when we have people out here, because all of us are smarter than any one of us. We try to do that, we try to live by that axiom. And we've done it the past, and, you know, a few months ago, we had a local law one, we proposed it.
I was there.
Yeah. People said, you know, "That's a bad law." We listened to it, "That's a bad law," and we didn't pass it. So that's what it's all about. Okay, well, thanks for that comment. Any other, oh, any other?
You haven't been coming so long, he used to have here.
Oh, yeah. You look like buckwheat.
Well, they're cool, aren't they? I mean, they've both got hair, huh? You're a corned egg.
Regarding an item on this past work session meeting, agenda, where the, where the town is, will be in receipt of monies as a result of a D E C, uh?
No, a D E A.
Pardon me, D E A civil forfeiture of a vehicle, I believe it was B M, BMW vehicle?
Well, Phil, if you'd like to, if you know all about it, if you don't, I do. Okay. We, we pulled over, one of our, our police pulled over a car. And it had a significant amount of drugs or whatever in it, maybe even money, I don't know, it was bought. And it was prosecuted, and the man lost his car, a woman, whoever it was, lost the car as a consequence of being arrested. Now, that money, okay, for the sale of that car, whether it's all or part of that, is going back to Goshen, so it's somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars. So we had to open up a non-interest-bearing account, checking account, to deposit that. Now, that money can only be used for drug-related police work, so it's, you know, so that's what that's all about, Derek.
So, my, my question is, that, uh, the sale of that vehicle was conducted after the trial had been concluded?
Maybe it was somewhere in, I mean, the court's out here all that, I don't know how that works. Jerry, can you tell us how that works? You were in that business.
Yeah, we had, at one point, when I was downtown, we had a square block garage. We couldn't fit any more cars in it, that we seized. And you have to go through every municipality that was involved with that seizure of that vehicle, or monies, they are entitled to a percentage. And it is usually after, to answer your question, when the case is, is resolved. Then, they're either auctioned off, or sold, or some other way they dispose of all this, and then the money goes. But they, in a city, it's going to be a lot of money. I mean, Doug, we had so many cars, it was incredible. One of the bosses, my guy, "We've got to get rid of these things," we took them all over to Jersey, to, uh, you know, where they stole all the cars and everything. Yeah, I mean, it was unbelievable.
Wow. You know, it's really interesting, on the, usually, the municipality or the police department can press these cars into the service.
That's right, you can keep them.
They can keep them.
Right, because under the cover.
I'm surprised that we, we.
We had guys riding around in Porsches.
Oh, absolutely.
Neighbors were calling up, "I think it's a dope dealer living next to me," it was a D E A agent.
And in addition to that, if there's a finance contract on the car, the finance company can't recover.
They're screwed. You're absolutely right.
You know, they're, they're out of the car, "We're really sorry, but we're using this car, we're pressing it into drug service."
Sales, gee, too much money.
Yeah, my personal car.
So, so there was a definitive conclusion to the case before it went to sale?
Yeah, it was.
The possibility of appeal had been?
I don't know if the check is in yet, no, we've got the check in, can't open.
Check's probably in the mail.
Without due respect, Doug, I don't think that's the question. The question is, was there an adjudication?
Yes.
Because you said it has been notorious protecting vehicles without there being a final determination.
Oh, no, no, this was completed, this was completed. They called us, said, "We got the money, we want to send it to you. We have to have the counties protect it." So we said, "Okay." And so we made a motion the other night to open the non-interest-bearing checking account.
That's an interesting question. In bookmaking, illegal gambling operations? I've seen it, where the FBI will come in, they will follow a guy, see what he's doing as far as bookmaking, arrest, don't arrest him, seize the vehicle, seize his money, and say, "Our opinion is, this was used for the transportation of illegal gambling, ba, 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 ba." "Oh, you want it back? Sure, litigate us." Because we'd love to see you sit in that chair under oath.
Oh, my.
So they go, "Get the car." And also, there's, there's also another, in narcotics, there's the same thing. And also, there's- there's also another, in narcotics, there's the same thing. And that's like, eh, you know, if you really wanna bust- bust the guy.
I was reading the newspaper, or on TV, I think, a month ago, up in Sullivan County, there are one or two homes, they were loaded with marijuana.
Right.
And they busted it.
They take the house.
They take the house.
Oh, the Rico? They take everything.
You know, they- they, in the Wall Street Journal, and I imagine in the New York Times, periodically, there are advertisements that run for pages, of these things which can be bought at auction.
I've gone in one of the-
That's where they get the auctions down in there.
Yeah.
And it's, now, whether you wanna buy these things, what you may find in the trunk, who the hell knows?
Who you may find in the trunk.
I- I hope that I would go there.
I have a question. Is this unusual for Goshen? You said you opened this account, I mean, you haven't had any other examples of this?
This is the first one, this is the first one since I've been-
I mean, all the cars that have stopped on 17 and all that?
No, we- we mostly stop cars on town roads.
Right.
And- and don't, police 17 is a, that's the state police and others. But this one might have been on 17M, I don't know where they caught the person.
I'm surprised that-
We can hear the money.
Yeah, but it had to be a high-value car. I mean, wait, you know, to stop a guy with a little Honda or something, it's not even worth it.
Right.
I'd be like Dennis'-
Three to gas.
What's your, you know, a Beamer, that's-
I- I know the town has opted out, or at least you told us that you have, but I couldn't help but notice that there's a pesticide application on the town hall lawn. So they'll probably fold it into your bill and hope you don't notice it.
Well, you know, I'll talk to Barbara, 'cause it's the-
You told me last year.
Uh, my, yeah.
Yeah, well, I know they-
Some of those companies are on automatic.
Exactly, yeah.
So, I'll- I'll ask Barbara to check on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comment? I am-
What?
Oh, okay.
I just wanna update you on the training. Uh, we had some issues with bringing all the training up to date with the C A and the D E A. And, uh, as of today, other than the weapons qualifications today, in that all the training were all up to date, all mandated training from the state, tomorrow they'll be qualifying with the weapons or discussion. So all the training that was in the low or whatever, should be all in current practice.
Great, that's good news.
Okay, would someone like to-
I have a quick question about taxers. Um, you basically accepted the settlements on these cases, but there was no mention of the amount of money, or what the- the shape of the settlements were. Obviously, you're all aware, you've got a paper in front of you, but-
What is that, G A one?
That's what I said, yeah, that's how. But, uh, I was wondering if there's some way to simply communicate what was involved in the settlements, either in terms of cash, or, uh, did it take the shape of reduced assessments, or-
Okay, they were reduced, that resulted in, uh, refunds.
Uh-
Yeah.
Were- were any of those refund amounts, uh, significant?
Uh, they're significant to the school.
Well, that, I was going there.
Yeah, some is-
I remember it was the town.
Yeah, some is, no, the town, the town, almost every instance, there was less than $2,000.
Then the next question is, uh, were the school and the village board, boards involved in the negotiation of the settlements, since they are impacted by them?
They are not involved, they are kept informed.
Yes. Now, the gentleman can participate on any one of them.
Yeah, just so you, I don't need to be so blunt on that. Well, what we do is, we notify, I- I notify them, and they have master list, I call it, of every case that the town has handled, uh, which will impact fire district, school, uh, and the village, because of the village property. Then, they can either voluntarily participate by, if you will, coming along for a ride and contacting me, or meeting with me, as we discuss these things or negotiate. Or, in certain instances, the village has actually hired a attorney, where they, at certain levels, dollar-wise, intervene actually in the case. So they're another party to the case.
School board.
Uh, school board.
The village.
I'm sorry, the school. The village, uh, to date, has not seen fit to do that, although Donovan is kept informed, he's aware. Uh, so, it's a quasi, you can do it, but we're not gonna beg you to come along, but we have the authority and the responsibility to discuss these things.
Well, that's- that's kinda where I was going with it, because every time they need to pass a resolution to rebate a check, there's a complaint that, you know, the- the town has done this to us, and we have no say in it, and we have to accept it. That's not my understanding of the process, and I was just curious whether any of these taxers are gonna be significant to the village, and, well, more significantly to the school, because that's-
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
Are we talking rebates of over $10,000?
Most certainly. Yeah. We just take it all, yeah.
Well, I went to look, and I- I, some of the, if I had involved the village for the next 12 months, it'd be much to happen, maybe even more.
For the village?
The village.
Yeah, that one, that one's a problem.
It depends on how fast they go. I mean, the-
The ones that are coming down quite.
Yeah.
Not what you've just done.
Correct, correct.
Oh, that's, it's a case- Is the village aware of the total amount?
Yeah, well, what I do, just so you're aware, uh, and it's, of course, again, I know what I do, now what they do with the information, I don't know. But it goes to all the attorneys, uh, we give them what they call, what I call, Excel programs, flow charts, which indicate assessments, posed assessments, reductions, there is to be one, and then the actual refunds for a particular year, by, again, uh, town, school, village, fire district, county, depending on the asset to blow, okay? And those, that information is given to them, in fact, I've given spreadsheets, I mean, it looks like a computer manual, of all these are appended. So, now, how much they analyze them, or how much they talk about it, this guy, I can't tell you.
Joel, let me say this, that if you read in any of the accounting journals, taxer shares in New York State are running rampant, Long Island, Nassau County, Westchester County. I mean, it is incredible.
And we've got a great state coming up.
It is, it is, it is a form of revenue for businesses and other things that are in tough times. Now, one of the things that I've been talking about with that business job is, taxer shares are a hidden liability. And we had them, some will go back to the year 2000, and they just keep accumulating, and these companies won't move on until they need the money.
Is one of these-
And that, why are we, we've got more of this year than us in this venture. And so, so anyway, it is not unique to the town of Goshen at all, or the village of Goshen or the Orange.
Certainly not.
And, uh-
It's just that there's one particular board member on the village board, that every time this comes up, complains bitterly about it, threatens to, uh, go back to-
Get involved?
We hope they do.
Well, they can, they can have the assessor. They can, now, the state of New York, the comptroller last week was in the newspaper, he thinks we have two money assessors.
Oh, I see.
And that we ought- and we ought to even trick, I mean, for example, the assessor here could be in the county.
Yeah.
It could be in the village, it could be in the school board, but it says domicile is this building.
I understand. And it's just not to have a-
And in fact, there is a lot of talk at one time to have Goshen and Chester all being one, and in that case, the assessor could very well be in Chester.
Or the county taking over.
Or the county taking over.
But just so you're aware, I have never, and I've been attorney here, only because I have children to think, I've probably been here over 30 years, not consecutively, but 26 consecutively, five since I came back. And I've never been contacting anybody in the village, officially, as to what these taxers represent or what they are. We've been handling it for that type of time, other than when winters was the assessor for the village some years ago. And now Donovan is informed, okay? Now, what is imparted subsequently, I couldn't tell you. Uh, but again, I- I don't know the particular trustee you speak of, but no one's ever contacted me.
Let me give you an example. There's one property owner in the village, has like seven, eight, nine properties.
That's my wall.
My wall. Wants a 75% reduction in their assessed value. I mean, they- they were right to do that, and so they put it down. Well, we have to defend that, or we have to negotiate something differently. But it's a revenue stream for them, whether it be Manolton Friendly Ice Cream, whatever they are, you know, the, so, it's a way of, and it's going on today more than ever before, and, uh, and with a down market, guess what? And there are now attorneys specializing in it. It's not a good thing.
I don't know if the board's aware of it, I'm, it was this day, Thursday and Tuesday, this week was a front-page story in the New York Times, about Westchester County, and some- how some of the towns were actually drowning in these taxers, in terms of potential refunds. And see, just as a complicated matter, the board is aware. Uh, we also, in terms of communication, seek, we like all contribution, many times, in the school district or in the village, because although we have the responsibility by law, we don't necessarily, we also have the responsibility to pay for these things. And the average appraisal for one of these properties, if you can't negotiate it or settle it, you're looking at a minimum of $5,000, let alone the attorney's fees, and you haven't even met the trial yet. So you're talking about very expensive proceedings. And in many instances, you've got to be critical, but the village wants the information, they wanna be part of it, but don't send us a bill, and we don't wanna participate on the expense of it. And I think, we actually talk, well, I don't think it would necessarily be objected to if the village would ever wanna reassert their right to have an assessor, and guess what? They can handle all these things. Because, in fairness, as this board knows, the majority of the major potential liability dollar-wise taxers are in the village. I mean, what are you talking about in the town? Whereas you look around the village, in terms of the commercial properties, from at-field lanes or wherever, the apartment complexes, they don't exist in the town, they're in the village. So the village is, uh, understandably and rightly so, concerned about some of these refunds, and they should be. And if they want more input, they've either gotta participate.
Well, that was really my question.
You know, and we-
Because this is their complaint, that the town has done this to us, we have no say.
You know, the- the fact is, the assessor is an independent judge. She's appointed her so many years, we can't talk to her about what she does in assessments. It's board. Now, so then what happens, and when there's a surcharge area, this board then has to defend the assessor. And that's when we spend money for legal fees, appraisals, et cetera. And- and that will, in fact, that's, so it is, uh, we're doing our due diligence in that regard. But we're- we're never involved in the actual assessment. We're not doing anything to anybody.
No, I was just-
Yeah, tactically, Sabiki, that's how someone who didn't understand assessment would say. Because again, they control it, which is true, we make the decisions, which is true, and we impose, stand or settle, or defend accordingly. But if you follow, and again, this is somewhat defensive in my office, I have no problem doing these things. But I- I'm only gonna go so far, be it with the school district, or the fire district, or the village, because guess what? My time is charged back to these people, the taxpayers of town. And once I notify them, I'm like, "Look, you are more than welcome to come to the meetings, discuss it with us." In fact, I will say this, the village attorney did participate in some discussions on one of the major office complexes in Goshen, which is appendy taxer. But they have, uh, he knows, and I communicate this, and I'm sure he'd echo it, they have absolute, uh, free, unfettered access to me and all these negotiations, should they wanna participate. But I'm not gonna beg them to come, take up my time to go out of that kind of stump and preach, you know? And that's the difference. And I don't think many times the village understands that. Uh, so, there.
Okay. But, any other questions? Well, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn and to go into executive session, we intend not to return, to discuss current status of the village, town, sewer dispute arbitration, review the letters of the village regarding M T V Es, discuss potential litigation regarding leg injury at Crayville Park, and FBI training.
Oh, whoa.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Folks, again, thank you very much for coming.
Jerry, does that like one of the, uh, B M Ws from our one?